All right, I reckon it's we're time to get this show on the road. I've got 12:30 on my clock. Are you guys good to go?
Yeah.
But look, thanks for everyone who's dialed in already. This has certainly been a very popular webinar. This is, I think, the seventh of our Ocean Protect webinars, but Ocean Protect aren't presenting it. It's two highly qualified gentlemen from Blacktown City Council will be presenting, and Andrew Thomas and Daniel Ryder. For those who aren't, before we dive into their pre-so, just for those who aren't familiar with Ocean Protect, we've been operating for nearly 20 years. We've got about 50,000 assets in the ground and we maintain about 10,000 of those. And we think we stop about seven tonnes of pollution every day. There's essentially three pillars to our business: innovation, education and advocacy. So people who are obviously, or most people on the call would be very familiar with our assets types. So we've got a range of storm treatment devices, both underground and vegetated assets. And we install these assets and also we have a lot of guys maintaining those assets on behalf of Ocean Protect. So Ocean Protect have crews that maintain our own assets. So we see firsthand essentially what our assets do and they certainly stop a lot of pollution. In terms of the education advocacy, people might be familiar with the fact that we've been pretty busy in this space. So in partnership with Storm in New South Wales, we've developed the zero-littered ocean policy paper and we've been advocating very heavily to federal and state government in that regard. But we, look, the educational arm is also extended to, you know, we've done obviously the YouTube video about where to store water go. We fund or help fund the Keeping Waterways Clean module, which is an educational module under the Keep Australia Beautiful New South Wales banner. And that educates thousands of kids around how to protect our waterways from pollution. You might have seen guys like Jeremy in the media talking about the importance of storm management. We've done a couple of crazy videos and we also do a podcast. So we're just ticked over 100 episodes now. We're pretty sure it's the only podcast that talks about stormwater. But we talk about a whole bunch of issues facing the ocean, what we can do about it. The most recent one being we've got Andre Borel and Lauren Sanderman, who were involved in the creation and campaigning for the Envoy Shark cult movie, which if you haven't seen that already, I'd certainly encourage you to do that. But that's a fascinating chat with those two guys. And obviously, if you like webinars, and I assume you do, given you're here today, with our next one is on 9th of September, another lunchtime session. And that's presented by Craig Fairball through from the, from Contech Engineering Solution in the States. And he's talking about bar retention systems, essentially the research and sort of latest sort of innovations from the USA. But look, without further ado, I might pass it over to my esteemed colleagues in Andrew and Daniel. So just let me give me a sec, I'll stop sharing my screen and I'll let one of you guys, I think it's going to be potentially Andrew.
Yes, it is.
Share his screen. And just give me a sec from my end. And look, if you haven't, if you're not familiar with Andrew and Daniel, which I'd probably find hard to believe, but I think it was Daniel, I think you're a bit more junior. You graduated from university in 2014 and was it 2018? Sorry, was it?
Yeah, well, high school was 2014.
24, sorry, Daniel. Gee whiz, I just assumed you were far more experienced doing this great work. I thought you'd been around for longer. You've got a colourful work experience history and I think you've been at Blacktown City Council for two years and you're one of the worsted, one of two worsted compliance officers at Blacktown City Council and obviously been heavily involved in the development and implementation of this program. And then there's some guy called Dr Andrew Thomas, who's been in the industry for about 20 years. He's just had a shave and he's, he's actually, and he tells me, and I'm not sure about this, but he's actually just been re-elected somehow as Vice President of Storm in New South Wales. And obviously, he's involved in this, heavily involved in this Blacktown City Council Wussard Programme as well. So without further ado, Andrew, Daniel, feel free to take it away. Sorry, just Daniel, we can't see you. Have you turned off your video? Oh, hang on, I think Daniel, I think Daniel might have just jumped out for some reason.
He might be having technical issues. That doesn't matter. I will truck on without him and hopefully he'll be joining us when he can. So we've already had a lovely introduction by Brad, so I won't spend too much time on this. But this is a Blacktown City Council Wussard Compliance Programme. And it's a programme that's been running for a while now, but it's been now subject to a massive revamp and it's been presented by myself, Andrew Thomas and Daniel. We're currently the Little Wussard Compliance Team for Blacktown Council. But this programme has had many inputs and we'll talk about that right at the end. But okay, let's get into it, because hopefully my slideshow will work. Okay, there we go. She's a bit slow, but there we go. What do we mean by private Wussard? What a sense of urban design, as many of you may know, but some of you may not. It's a philosophy of managing urban water and it isn't just stormwater. It's also the provision of alternative sources of potable water and flooding as well. But it's about that integration of water into the urban environment for a range of reasons, including water security, flood mitigation, livability. The other one is of course the waterway protection issues as well. But when we're talking about private Wussard, we're actually talking about Wussard systems, if you like, or the same sorts of things about rain guards and things like that, we'll go through that in a minute. But they're on private property. And why does that matter is because these ones are under private management, they're not public assets. And hopefully, if the council's concern has done their job well, there will be legal obligations for those property owners to maintain and manage them. But the issue is, is that even though there are these legal obligations, if they're not monitored and a lot of people don't understand what they are, they won't actually know what to do and when they need to do it. So again, just going through what do we mean by private Wussard systems? We're talking about biofiltration systems, which are typically rain gardens on private property, but it's not just residential, it's also commercial and industrial. Grass pollutant traps are quite common, filter cartridges, onsite detention systems are part of this programme as well. Then we've got permeable pavement, which is the type of pavement allows water to filter through and usually into either the soil itself or some sort of filter media that captures the water and takes it away. We're talking about pit inserts as well, that capture growth pollutants at the pit point where they drain off the road. Also, rainwater tanks are part of it. Rainwater tanks obviously provide an alternative water source, but they also provide a measure of detention as well. And non-potable water reporting is also included in our programme. So why do we care about private Wussard or Wussard at all? And there's, oh, you're back, Daniel. That's great. It's localised flooding. So private Wussard, while it may not actually provide much of, much in terms of large-scale flood mitigation, it does play a role in small-scale localised flood management. So it's important in that regard. Or obviously water security. We know that we're going into a climate uncertain future. We know that we're getting urban expansion and our current water supplies are limited. So it provides and will continue to provide more importantly going forward at water security way. We've got waterway protection, so the protection of waterways from grass pollutants, but also flow energies as well and polluted stormwater metals and nutrients and things like that. And one of the most important points I'd like to get across here, particularly the case of Blacktown Council, LGA, is that the vast majority of our assets are actually private owned. So if we're not managing these well, then that's a big issue. And there's also mounting evidence that there are low rates of maintenance on these systems. And there are a range of reasons for that that are covered very well by, that is actually still a spelling mistake. I still haven't fixed, that's A R D R E N, A R D R E N. I need to fix that. If you're out there, Ruby, I apologise. Okay, this is, just give me a second here while I get myself together. So the compliance programme, I'm just going to prove you there, Daniel, there you go. The compliance programme is, like we said, it's not something that we've, that we're doing from scratch. It's been around for a little while at Blacktown Council and it's a process of evolution. And I'm going to let Daniel take over from here.
Okay, so in 2012, Blacktown City Council implemented the Wussard Compliance Programme. It was an inspection-based programme that was being managed by an Excel spreadsheet. And so in 2018 and 2019, the programme was reviewed to kind of find areas for improvement. And it was found that the legal enforceability was severely limited and that an inspection-based programme for such a large council was impractical due to how many assets and properties that it were to enforce compliance on. So at the beginning of 2020, we started working on a new programme, which was going to have some significant changes. We thoroughly reworked the legal foundations. So this included development of consent conditions, positive covenant restriction on the use of lands and stuff like that, which Andrew will talk about soon. Then we integrated the programme into Technology One. So Blacktown City Council uses Technology One. So we thought it was important that we were getting involved in that. And so this allowed us, this is going to allow us to track properties and systems. So we understand where they are in terms of compliance. And then we've shifted from an inspection-based model to an owner reporting model. This doesn't mean that we won't do inspections, is that still going to be an important part of our programme? However, the responsibility is going to be more on the owner and the maintenance contractors to report to us. And so we've evolved quite a bit since 2012. However, we're still early on in the journey and we still have quite a bit more to go. So we're going to continue to evaluate and review our programme as we go. I can't seem to control the slides, Andrew, so you'll have to do it.
Do that for you. There you go.
So at the base of our compliance programme is compliance, which is about making sure that properties and the owners are complying with the legal requirements to maintain the Wussard systems. And so to ensure that this happens, we have our next component, which is our, Andrew, next, is our education and engagement component, which is about engaging and educating property owners so that they understand the systems, understand why they're important and understand how to manage them. Because without owner awareness of these systems, we're not going to understand, they're not going to understand how to properly maintain them. And so to ensure compliance, we need to engage and educate them. And then next, Andrew, we will be working towards a recognition and incentivisation component. At the moment, we've got the other two, but the recognition and incentivisation component will be about incentivising and recognising property owners for doing the right thing in terms of managing the systems. So that hasn't been something we've developed yet, but something we will look to implement at some point in the future. Andrew, your turn.
Yeah, thanks, Daniel. Okay, so now we're going to get into the exciting world of the legal side of things. It may seem a little dry, but this really is important. This is about giving the programme some teeth. And so we're going to go through how that's been established, at least in the New South Wales context. And it'll be different with states and if anyone's coming in from other nations or it'll be different again. This is, it gives you an idea of how we actually give this legal effect and it's very important that we have this if we need it. So it all starts with the Development Control Plan and that is in New South Wales. They have, local councils have local environment plans and they also have development control plans that are given legal effect through those legal, local environment plans and the EPNA Act. And this Development Control Plan includes a chapter for water-sensitive urban design and integrated water cycle management, at least does Blacktown Council. Other councils have similar development control plan chapters, but they're not always called the same thing. And identifies what types of development require Wussard system. So it defines if you're doing a development, do you need to consider Wussard in your development? It's basically centered around about 150 metres squared and above. But there are a few other things that go into that, but we don't have time for all that gory detail today. It also describes the strategies, assessments and plans that must be submitted when a de-application is put in. And so it also gives definition and describes to the applicants what they need to include in their development assessment process. And it also defines strategies, defines targets. So what equality, conservation and detention targets. Some of those are in the DCP directly, but there are other documents that it refers to the Blacktown Council produces as well. So it defines all those and describes those. And again, as I said, it's given legal effect under the New South Wales Environmental Planning and Assessment Act of 1979. So that's really a good start. That's the basis or foundation of the beginning of the, making the programme legal, is having that development control plan. The next, then it's about, we, one of the things that needed to be done to set this programme up was that a bunch of conditions needed to be specifically designed for the programme. And they have been rigorously tested through councils, departments and also our legal team and have since been approved by our executive management committee. So they're now going to go be part of new developments. And there's a few of them, there's only about four or five. I won't read them out, but you can see them there. And this, this one here, 1431.1, this new condition ensures applicants provide pertinent Wussard asset information to council. And that's things like their stormwater management plan that defines how they developed and modeled and decided on what sort of systems they needed to meet our criterias. But also things like works executed drawings and things like that, that they must supply so that we've got information that we need to run the programme. Then we've got ensure applicants submit a maintenance schedule. This is maintenance schedules, a specific thing we've designed particularly for this programme. It just provides us with the basic information we need and the applicant and then the property owner need to know when they need to do inspections and maintenance. And that becomes legally enforceable. Ensure applicants enter into a maintenance contract. So we do this because while there are some things you can do with water-sensitive urban design systems, there are many other things that either are technically challenging and some of them are just dangerous. So we have this requirement that a maintenance contract is entered into for the given property. And ensure applicants apply necessary positive and restrictive covenants. And we're going to talk about them next, but these are the things that after occupation certificate has been issued, these positive and restrictive covenants give us the power to run the programme in perpetuity. So again, these, these conditions are given legal effect under the EPNA Act of New South Wales. Next one, making it forever. And this is where we're getting into the covenants. Positive covenants and restrictions on the use of land. So they're written, these are instruments that are written by councils and they apply to the property. And they're written by councils. The councils have some way over how they write these, but we have our standard ones that have been very well vetted and other councils are welcome to see them and use them if they wish to. The given legal can affect under the Conveyancing Act of 1999. Now, these are actually, while they're written by councils, they're actually managed by the Land Registry Service of New South Wales. So they're registered there. And they're applied, this is a very important point, they're applied to the property, not the individual. So when a property changes hands, the property owner automatically becomes responsible for them. And lastly, they can't, they can only be extinguished by council. Nobody else can do that, even though they're managed by the Land Registry Service. The council is the consent authority, is the only group that can actually extinguish them. This is our positive covenant. I won't make you read it. I won't read through it. Just some basics here. It gives a definition of what a Wussard system is. So that's really important from a legal perspective of exactly what it applies to. It defines owner responsibilities to their system. So positive covenants, covenants are about what you must do to the system, maintain it to make it operate and things like that. Requires owners, this is very strong, this is very powerful, requires owners to act on any written instruction from council. So if we provide an email or a letter to an owner to do something, that has legal effect as well. It authorises us to inspect properties. So we still have to give notice, but we have the right to access properties to inspect assets that we don't get being reported on properly. And authorises councils to compel work. So again, we can actually write a letter or an email to a property owner and to describe what they must do and they must do it that has legal effect. And it also gives us right to cover, recover our costs for doing all that. And lastly, but not leastly, it makes the covenant binding to the property in perpetuity. So essentially forever unless we extinguish it. My applicant, property owners can make an application, but it's council that decides whether or not that can go through. And again, given legal effect on the Conveyancing Act of 1999 in New South Wales. We think so. On the use of land, the major difference here is this is what you must not do to a Wussard system in any way prevent it from doing its operation. So you can't build a shed on it, don't laugh, it happens. You can't, you can't disconnect a water flow path to it. So if you have a rainwater tank, it's illegal to remove the flow from the water gutter flowing into it, things like that. You can't do that. And again, it gives a definition to a Wussard system, same sort of deal. Prevents the owner from doing any maintenance and anything that they shouldn't do to it. And again, binding in perpetuity. And this is all given legal effect under the Conveyancing Act of 1918, I think it was. Okay, so reporting is mandatory. Just give me a second so I can catch my other screen up. And this is over to Daniel.
Yep. So for owner reporting model to work, reporting needs to be mandatory. So we've developed a few things to help with that. We have our reporting sheets that we've developed, which are available in our Wussard Inspection and Maintenance Guidelines on our website. And so what that provides are inspection and maintenance sheets to be filled out for the asset type that you have. And so it's been created for each asset type that we accept and deal with. So on the screen, you can see a inspection sheet for a rainwater tank, which breaks down the rainwater tank into its functional components, giving you space to give a condition score for the component and then leave some notes about that component. Then we've also created a maintenance schedule template, which will be available on our website once we've uploaded it. And so the aim of this template is to create consistency across properties and systems to make sure they're all being maintained the same. It allows everyone, us, the property owner and the maintenance contractors to understand what maintenance is required and when it is required. And it has to be filled out as part of the development consent. As Andrew talked about earlier, there is the condition that requires this to be filled out. And so this is given legal effect through the Conveyancing Act 1919, Division Four, which is via our positive covenant. Next, Andrew. So this slide presents a very basic overview of the programme. And so on the left, we have the green side, which is the compliant side. And then on the right, we have the red, which is the non-compliant. And so the aim is to keep everyone in the green. However, that won't always happen. So we've developed a pathway all the way to legal action. So at the beginning of the programme, a property will enter our Tech One application, which may enter for a few different reasons, such as receiving occupation certificate, property changing ownership or us becoming aware of a property later on. Once they've entered into our Tech One application, we will generate a welcome letter, which we will send to the property owner. This is just to introduce ourselves and help the property owner understand what's happening. We then get to the inspection report due date, so the due date for the first inspection report. And so this is where things can diverge a bit. So I'll go through two scenarios. So first off, the reports could be, would be submitted by this due date. And so they move to the next box, which is assess reports and corrective actions. We assess the report and say that no corrective actions are required. So then it loops back to inspection reports due and hopefully it would stay in this loop. However, that won't always happen. And so in the worst case scenario, the inspection reports aren't submitted by this due date. So then we send a letter advising them that the reports were not received and that they have to a specified due date to submit a report saying what's happening. We then get to that due date, which is the border between compliant and non-compliant. And so in this scenario, maybe the report wasn't received or a report was received and corrective actions were still required. So they enter non-compliance, we send them a letter advising them that a report is required in, by a certain due date. And then we get to that due date. Again, if no report is received or a report is received and corrective actions are still required, we will send them a letter telling them that we're coming to do an inspection on a specified date. We come and do that inspection. We say what's happening with the property and their system. After that, we send them a letter telling them the issues with the property and then tell them they have to a specified due date to fix these issues and report to us. As well with that letter will be an invoice as a kind of a cost recovery component of that inspection. We then get to the due date for the report and the costs. And if the report isn't received or the money's not received or a report is received and corrective actions are still required, then our legal team will actually get involved from them. They will send a letter to advise that things have to be fixed immediately. And then the legal team kind of decides going forward what to do. And so the aim of this pathway is to provide property owners a lot of opportunities to do the right thing. So we've given them a lot of letters and notice before we take them, before the legal team gets involved.
Yeah, that's correct, Daniel. And just, okay, so just taking off on that point with Daniel, we do give them a lot of opportunities. As many of you may be well aware, water-sensitive urban design is not very well understood outside our little niche industry of stormwater management. So it would be remiss of us to go straight out there with some sort of stick approach and start beating people over the head with legal action because they weren't maintaining their Wussard systems. So a lot of this programme, while it does have a compliance component, while it does have that legal effect, we actually want to focus more on the engagement with the community side of things. So we're building a purpose-built website, which will be going live very soon. We've got most of the bits that we need there. We've just got a couple of things left to do. As Daniel mentioned, we've got all those letters that go out. We're also producing a bunch of fact sheets, which will go on that website. We've got our water-sensitive urban design inspection and maintenance guidelines, which we've had for some many years now, which is pretty good. But they really get down to the nitty-gritty without making it too complicated. We've got instructional videos that we're creating and we're also making sure that people can talk to us. I mean, there is a trend these days for a lot of organisations to move away from this sort of thing, but given the difficulties and the newness of it, Daniel and I are prepared to take phone calls from individuals to help them as much as we can. Onto our last slide. It takes a little while for it to click over when I press the button. There we go. Is engaging with the industry. And this is, this last slide is about other organisations, councils particularly, that are wanting to build similar sorts of programmes. We're actually documenting this whole thing in a manual. So it's taken us more, you know, almost two years to get to where we are now. We're only just about ready to go live. And it shouldn't take other councils as long as it did us because we'll provide you with a lot of stuff to make it a lot easier. So sharing resources, the inspection maintenance guidelines, we're more than happy to share them. You can just basically rebadge them, just acknowledge Blacktown Council and rebadge them if you want or make changes, but just acknowledge us, that's all we ask. So we're working very closely with things like the Stormwater Emergency Association, the PRCG, which is the Paramedic River Catchment Groups and other ones like the George's River Keeper and Coaster Reliance, that'd be nice too. And the reason we're doing this is because a lot of innovation doesn't happen top-down. It's more to do with what I like to call, and it's given that we're in the COVID thing, it's a bit topical at the moment, it's innovation by contagion, just this spread of ideas organically through the system. So that over time, we see this taken up because as more and more organisations do, it becomes more normalised. And that's it, except for this last slide with this good-looking bloke there. But I really want to, there's our contact details, you could use that email address. But I need to acknowledge a few people because this has been, this programme's been running for many years and they need to be acknowledged. Ben Penhorick, which was heavily involved in the basic structure that Daniel showed you. And then we've got Aditi and Russell and a whole bunch of others that have been involved at Blacktown Council over the last almost 10 years. So as much as I want to take the credit, I can't have to acknowledge these people as well. And that's it.
Well done, gentlemen. Thank you very much for that. That's a really informative presentation and we also had a lot of questions come through already. Just a reminder for everyone, if you do have a question that you'd like to ask Andrew or Daniel, please put it in the Q and A. It's just harder for us to come, see them in the chat. But if you've just got a comment about Andrew's new haircut or shaving skills, please put that in the chat. But look, I'm going to, I'm going to dive into the Q and A panel because we've got a few questions there already. It's going to be a case of basically first and best dress. So if you've, if you've got a question you'd like to ask these guys, please do so in the Q and A. The first question that I came across was early was from Reshu Singh. And they ask, what could be the possible economic reuse options of stormwater?
Oh, yeah. I mean, we talk about water security to begin with and I think this is, you know, as we move into, it's not just climate change and the uncertainty around that, but it's that reuse of stormwater and rainwater that can, not just economic, but social benefits as well that, you know, without which it could, it could get, potable water supplies could get very expensive. So there's an economic issue there. There's also the economics around preventing floods and destruction of waterways and things like that that make our urban environments less lovely and nice to live in, which can have, there's work done out of Wollongong University, the Power Lab, for example. You Google that at Wollongong University. They're talking to the issues of mental health and physical, and physical health even, that are correlated to, you know, urban development that isn't, doesn't incorporate principles espoused by water-sensitive urban design. And then there's the waste products itself. You know, the better we get as an industry in separating ways, you know, soil conditioning, recycled materials, the list goes on and on. It's just, it's really a mindset, it's really not an economic issue if the industries are set up.
I don't think, no, I think Reshu was more interested not so much the benefits, but more what are the actual options of how do you reuse stormwater? Like irrigation, toilet flushing, et cetera.
Yeah, anything, any non-potable source really, it just depends on the level of your treatment. There are irrigation guidelines for stormwater harvesting and. Um. There are, you know, irrigation guidelines for stormwater harvesting and um recycled water more generally that you'd need to comply with for different types of uses. But um you can pretty much use it for anything, providing, except for maybe potable water. But even so, if you really wanted to, of course, the cost goes up. But yeah, there's, there's plenty of options. You could use it for anything, really, um, as long as you meet the guidelines.
Uh. Question from could be Jan or Yarn Rosenhall. Uh. Can you do the maintenance of these assets yourself if you are capable?
Daniel, do you want to do that?
Okay. Um. So at the moment, we're actually trying to finalize a fact sheet that covers this, which is we, so there are certain actions that a property owner can do if they're like capable of doing it. However, there are some safety concerns and issues that need to be considered and certain expertise um might be needed, certain equipment, training, that sort of thing, because there are confined spaces and working from heights hazards and that sort of thing. So it really depends on what type of asset it is and how large the asset is and what it's made of. Oh, so it's kind of hard for us to say straight out. Um. They can do all maintenance because they most likely can't. But we are trying to figure out a way to allow owners to do some of the maintenance because we do understand the cost and stuff associated with getting a maintenance contractor.
Yeah, that's a fair point. I mean, it's just a, um, it's also whether a person is physically able to do it. Um. And it really, it's just, I mean, at the end of the day, it's private property. If someone wants to maintain their asset, there's nothing we can do about it. But um we need to, yeah, we need to be careful to advise people that there are some dangers associated with it.
Cool. We've got a lot of questions coming through, uh nineteen, twenty now, uh, uh, and actually nine in the chat. So I'm gonna try and charge through them. Uh. Apologies if this, we might need to run through some of them quickly. Uh. Aaron Smith asks, what if the new owner finds the worst of the elements as noncompliant? Who bears the cost to fix?
Whoa, what a question. That gets into the dark world of certification, whether it was done by private. Um, uh, look, it's just, we're actually dealing with issues, aren't we, Daniel, right now about? They're already starting to come up. And one of, I guess, well, it's, it's not an easy answer, but I can say this. With this program, we are able, we are able to feed back to council where things are going wrong because these issues do come up. And I guess that'll help council and also hopefully state government um uh improve the rigor around things like private certification uh and other things that are causing, we have found a few that have been certified but not built properly. That's an example. Uh. Daniel, want to add anything to that?
No, not to that.
Cool. Yeah, we've got another question and uh it's from Charlie Caraballo. Uh. He asked, how how effect, I'm not sure if you guys can answer this, but he says, ask how effective has the maintenance of the water quality devices on private ownership? Or has there been a lot of noncompliant on of maintenance by the owners?
Okay. Um. There was, I mentioned that study by Ruby Adrian, uh, who's now with Aluvium, used to be with Northern Beaches and is doing a PhD through Macquarie University. And she's done some work on this. And the evidence that she produced suggests that it's woeful. Um. And it's not necessarily because uh property owners are bad. It's because this is a new technology, it's poorly understood, hence the need for a heavy engagement side of this compliance program.
Uh. Scott Halet asks, how does Black Town City Council go about enforcing compliance under the Convalesse Act? I was under the assumption that this could only be taken up through the courts.
Uh. Well, that's why we, and as Daniel showed, that's why we let our legal team deal with that. So the compliance program is actually about, is the program that we run is all the way through to trying to get people to comply with their covenants. Um. If they don't, um, then it becomes a legal matter that is sorted through the courts.
Hmm. Yeah, hopefully, I guess the legal matters don't come up too often, at least early on, because obviously there is a strong focus towards this education and incentivization. Uh. Ding Ding Zoo asks, uh, when are these measures coming into effect? When does the program start?
Ah, the program's starting. Well, it's, that's a, I'll answer a lot of this. It's, it should be coming in within the next few months. It really depends on a couple of issues with our tech one system. But the more proper answer is that we're going to roll it out slowly. We're going to start off with a small number of properties, probably about twenty. We're going to face on focus on industrial and commercial for two reasons. They they tend or tend to, but not always, uh, produce a more pollution than residential, particularly low density. But also because uh these larger industrial, commercial properties are more robust. They have administration systems around them. And it's much, uh, we believe it's much more ethical to test it on those sorts of organizations than people living in low-density residential that might not have um as much um knowledge about how to deal with these sorts of things.
Cool.
So it'll be a slow rollout over the next year and about two years, we're gonna roll the program out. And we'll stop based on when we get to a point where we're no longer able to keep up with it. So when we reach saturation, if you like.
Uh, yeah, sorry. Uh, yes, for another question from Sam Neil. Uh. Is there any legal precedent for uh for other types of assets which permits council or other authorities to demand inspection access rights? Is the asset in effect similar to an easement in this regard? I think the example that comes to mind is just septic on-site septic tanks.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Look, it is similar. Um. It it is, it is basically, my understanding, correct me if I'm wrong, Daniel, it's the same sort of system. The the key difference here is the um, the education side of it and the engagement. But it's, it's basically the same thing. It's the, you saw the uh Convalesse Act, that dates back to nineteen eighteen. It's not new, the legal, the legal mechanisms that we're just applying to a new technology.
Um. Sam also asks, how are these requirements which are appended to the land title communicated when the land is sold and comes under new ownership?
Daniel?
Yep. So when a property does change ownership, we will engage with the property, we will send them our welcome letter to introduce ourselves in the program. Um. So yeah, we will communicate with them as soon as we're aware that there is new ownership of a property. So we'll tell them their requirements and stuff then.
Yeah, the um councils will know this anyway because when properties change hands, they need to track of of that process because of rates and other things. So we'll be advised through our gateway people.
Uh. Ben Capuana asks, what type of incentivization programs are in the works for residents?
Yeah. Okay. So well, we actually haven't thought about the residents that much because we're doing them much later. But with companies, the industrial side of things, there'll be things like public, uh, you know, publicizing their good. If they're doing their job well, they uh will promote them through media. Um. There are also, um, oh, there's the, I've forgotten their name, there's the, it'll hook with their ratings for the.
Green Building Council, isn't it?
Yeah, that's the one. So there are things like that um that we can do. And some organizations won't, it won't be a big deal for them, but for others it will. So that's the sort of incentivizations that we're talking about. There was suggestions that we might uh do other things, but they're marginal. So they're the main ways at the moment.
Free hugs. Uh. Rob Barbuto uh asks, is there a similar program for O S D tanks and basins?
Well, we actually do include O S D in this, only private.
Yep.
So if if they come on uh private land, so for those that don't know, on-site detention, it 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 comes under this program in exactly the same way.
Cool. Susan Bailey asks, how will you deal with existing wussed assets and pulling them into the program?
Daniel, you want to tell them about that?
Um. So we, so before this program, well, before I got involved, there was an Excel database which has, I don't know, maybe seven or eight properties. So we'll go through all of that and transfer that into our program. And then there are other ways of searching through documents and stuff and maybe just some random orders here and there just to figure out where some are. But we probably can't get every single property, but we'll try our best to get as many as we can.
Yeah, this is the other side of the program and we all talk about compliance. We don't realize that this program will do a couple of things. One, it'll actually help us identify where the other properties are um and actually be able to map them because one of the things we ask for is uh works as executed drawings and we actually map where they are. So we'll actually know where the private assets are. Um. And the other issue is there are, there were covenants and conditions that existed before, but there were very, um, what's the word, they're a bit messy and not well controlled. That's why we brought the new ones in to make that so much more efficient. But it's got to be a little bit of a struggle to get the existing properties on. But there are covenants and conditions in place that allow us to do that to varying extents.
Uh. Shayla Devakala asks, uh, have you guys got any tips on what process you went through from a grassroots level, i.e. engineering or sustainability department from idea to up until this got teeth, especially within the council taking it higher up?
Um, Daniel and I were around when this first initiated, but it's, Black Town's had a dedicated waterways team for since at least the two thousand. It's had some wonderful people in it. Um, uh. And it's just a grind and to stick with it and to keep uh finding, the way, the way I've done it in other places is to find, um, there are people in those other departments that actually support and and want to see that sort of thing get up. So you've just got to find your allies within the other departments and and work through it and be patient. It's not easy. Um. It's taken Black Town, which is a council that's arguably got more resources than many. Um, you know, it many years, a couple of decades to get it this far.
Obviously.
Yeah.
Uh, people will probably, I guess, follow in your footsteps and make, and you guys have made it a lot easier for others to follow.
That's a good point, Brad, because once we get it up and running, you can use us as an example. Well, it's not new. Black Town's doing it. So that's, just, just watch this space as well. Good point, Brad.
Uh. Andrew Francis asks, council has the provision in some areas for developers to pay contributions rather than install wussed devices on site. Will this option still be offered?
Yes, in certain locations, um, as as defined by our local environment plan mapping in the state governments, we've got a few going on. It's a bit confusing in Black Town, but essentially, yes. And there are offset sites in Black Town.
Uh. I think this is, yeah. So Naveen Kumar asks, uh, do you guys, does council undertake any inspections of wussed assets at the construction sites, at the construction stage? If not, what techniques do you use to check efficacy of wussed measures such as rain gardens?
Okay, so there are people in our engineering uh side of things do. Um, I try to. It's, it's a resourcing issue. I'm sure a lot of other councils will be um familiar with this. Um. But there's a lot of private certification as well.
Uh. Heather Bradbury asks, are you aware of any similar programs in any Victorian council?
No, we're in Australia. And if anyone knows of any, please let us know because we are claiming it's the first in Australia.
Yep.
Maybe the world.
Alan West uh asks, when seeking to purchase a property, what do you, what do prospective buyers see within the section thirty-two statement? And have you found that they have an appreciation of their future cost obligations?
Hmm. I don't know if you want to answer that, but I would say they get a good conveyancer. Make sure that when you purchase a property, invest in a good conveyancer or solicitor because it won't be obvious to most people. That's what we've, that's, that's what, what we understand is is not obvious, you know? So get a good conveyancer, a solicitor and and invest in that and you should be okay.
I think from my perspective, it'll come to become standard. So if you have a site in a rural environment, say, and a septic tank, you would just know that you'll have to have it maintained and that will get cost. How much? Yeah.
Yeah, eventually, but these, these days, most people have no idea.
Yeah. Um. Shayla Devakala asks again, is revising a D C P V ownerous? I e, is it just a council decision or involves state level departments also?
Well, I, my understanding, and we didn't, neither Daniel nor I have been directly involved in it, but I was a bit in Wollongong Council and it's, it's a big process. And my understanding is it does involve um meeting the guidelines as provided by the state government. And there may be, I'm not, I'm not sure if the D C P is, but the local environment plan is. So those work together. So I'm not really sure, but it's not a, it's not something you can just do randomly. So there has to be a process.
Terry Lukey asks, it might be how long is a piece of string question, but he's, he's asked, how long will maintenance be required? And what are the cost implications? Obviously, it depends on the assets.
Yeah, and it's, it's in perpetuity, uh, even to the point of uh replacement if it gets too old. Um. So it's, so long as that covenant is in place, then the property owners, no matter who they are and, you know, who buys and sells, will be responsible for that maintenance and replacing that asset when it's too old or it's reached its end of life. So and and, you know, that covenant is being designed to make sure that that is all covered.
I'm guessing people, when it comes to replacing asset, are they able to actually replace it with a different type of asset, provided they can demonstrate equivalency or better outcomes?
Presumably, yes. And but we, we haven't even got close to crossing that bridge yet. But yes, I can, in in intuitively, uh, and as a general statement, as long as it does what it's meant to do or better, then most councils, if they have a program, probably wouldn't have a problem.
Cool. Uh. A number of people have asked for the copies of the slides. I'm, I'm guessing you guys don't mind Ocean Protector providing a copy of the slides to uh on our website so people can download along with this video.
Okay, no, no, I don't mind.
And people are asking about C P D, uh, email Ocean Protector, we'll give you a certificate of P T P D. Um, uh, Nathan Pengley asks, you've provided some great guidelines for private um sites and how you, how your compliance works. Are you working with larger projects, specifically state-sized projects such as road projects, et cetera? And will they fall under the same or similar requirements?
No, we're not working with, um, I mean, only at a council level. Um. But we don't have any involvement in the R T A or, you know, the main roads or anything like that. That's state government. Um. We wouldn't have any objections to it, but that'd be a decision beyond Daniel and I though.
Yeah. Um. Nadika Minaj asks, what are the most common maintenance problems you have encountered so far? Is it just a case of no maintenance?
It's just a case of ignorance, um, as far as we can tell. I mean, this is only anecdotal, by the way, and Daniel may have a different opinion. But the first step is just to let them know that they have an asset. And the second step is to let them know that there's a program at Black Town Council that can help them understand it. That's the very first step. What do you think, Daniel?
Yeah, like we haven't actually started enforcing compliance, well, compliance from this program, well, from this revised program. So we're not really at that stage to know common issues. But kind of before this, I guess, yeah, getting reports frequently, just telling us what's happening. So yeah, going forward, I guess, making sure reporting is happening is kind of the first issue that we need to get sorted.
I mean, technically, a lot of properties are already in breach of their covenants. But we're not going to make that, and we're not going to approach it from that perspective. So, yeah, clearly they most, I don't think most, most people, some people are bad, but most people aren't. And I suspect it's ignorance.
Uh. Ronald Powell asks, will the maintenance inspection schedule template be developed for all uh Black Town City Council through proprietary products?
Yeah, as long as they're approved, we actually, that's, we actually run it very closely with approval so that we um, so that we get the uh inspection rates right, consistent with the manufacturer recommendations or other recommendations. Daniel, anything uh to add there?
No, no, that's it. It'll be on our website. So I'm sure you'll be able to check it out soon.
Uh. Jude Nirmal Raja uh asks the question, uh, and this is the uh one that often pops up. How do you make sure that the water quality outcomes are actually being achieved? Is it, is it based on maintenance? How do you check the water quality outcome and how to enforce if the water quality targets are not achieved? Is it purely a condition assessment of the asset? And if the asset is in a condition, you know, consistent with its design function, there's an assumption that its objectives will be achieved?
So this is, I love this question. Um, uh, look, at this stage, where the industry's at and the technology is for uh testing uh different types of water quality outcomes, um, we're relying on that the um, the tools used for determining what a property needs um are accurate. So the modeling stuff, that they're built properly. And then uh the compliance program and then maintenance. Yes, we're essentially relying, good maintenance equals we assume good performance. And I think there's, you could never be a hundred percent sure, but I think that's a pretty good outcome if we can get at least that far because maintenance is pretty poor at the moment. Daniel, any comments to add?
No, I agree with you.
I guess, I guess the only sort of asterisk that is Black Town City Council is undertaking uh soon undertaking its own wussed monitoring program, uh, looking at the performance of different devices.
Yeah, they're, they're, they'll be, uh, as far as I know, they're the public ones, but yeah, same principle.
Yep. Watch this space. Um. Uh. Kath- Catherine Hawken asks, uh, what is your experience with private certifiers making sure all the information is submitted before issuing occupation certificates?
I don't think we're really know yet, Daniel, because we haven't dealt with enough properties to know that.
Uh. So I would say, yeah, like with this revised program, again, we haven't really experienced it too much. Before this program, though, I guess, sometimes it's just kind of hard to find certain documents, whether that's council system or whether something wasn't submitted, not too sure. So I would contact them occasionally to get documents from them if I needed them.
Yeah, it's just as likely to be around systems and technically we should be collecting them anyway before we issue occupation certificates. So, yeah, hard to say.
Uh. Now, I'm, there's a, there's still a fair few questions in the Q and A, but I know there's some old, but much older questions in the chat. So I'm just gonna try and get through a couple of those. Um.
Sure thing, cheese.
Uh, is there, uh, is there any legal precedent for other types of assets which can't permit council or other authorities to demand inspection as access rights?
Yeah, cool.
Yep. Uh, I think they're all fairly similar to what we've covered already. Um. Uh, what called, I'm not sure what this means, what called C A U L D considerations are embedded to reach the diverse community on sometimes complex issues?
Ah, love this question. That's precisely why we're going to the large organizations first that have. Ah, love this question. That's precisely why we're going to the large organisations first that have got, uh, we don't want to, um, inadvertently harm anybody just because they might, um, be, you know, uh, have a, speak, the, the English isn't their first language and things like that. And will before we go to the residential side, probably when we start moving into the smaller commercial sites as well, we will be making sure that we have, um, uh, all of our tools, um, modified for people from different backgrounds, with different, uh, cultures and English capabilities or other languages. So it's a, it's a very good question and one that we picked up on as a major risk. So that's why we're doing what we're doing.
Is there a list of maintenance contractors or certified or approved maintenance contractors for these devices?
A risk to them or?
Is there a list of maintenance contractors?
You know, there, there, there is a bit. We're working on it through Stormwater New South Wales to get at least a list of people who've done, for example, the right training. Um, uh, well, there's a, Stormwater New South Wales has got their, uh, operation and maintenance manual. It's the only, uh, formal train there is out there from the moment for contractors. Um, there is, that, they, you know, attend the course and assumably pass it, which is not that hard. Um, and those, if they want to, we can list, we're going to try and get it listed on the Stormwater New South Wales website so that we can refer to it. But that's about all we have at the moment. There's no certification press or anything like that.
Right. Um, Steve asks, uh, Steve Young asks the question, what parties have a role in deciding if an asset is removed? And what does that process look like? Is there concerns if an owner kicks and screams enough, it will be removed?
Well, yeah, I mean, councils are democratic organisations and people can go to their councils and councils might make requests. Um, but, um, I guess that there is a danger there, but then it's up to the bureaucracy to decide whether or not it stays or it goes. And it really would not come down to a case-by-case basis. So it's, I mean, I think it would be, I think it's a reasonably robust system. That's how I would state it, my understanding of how it works. Um, nothing's perfect, but I think it's reasonably robust.
This is a doozy of a question from Norsheen Obaid. Uh, do you implement same maintenance and compliance, compliance requirements on council-owned wussed assets? So obviously all these requirements being put on privately owned sites, how are council doing with their maintenance of their own assets?
Well, you know, it's, it's not perfect, but I can tell you this, the council, at least at Blacktown, is going through this better practice review process. And, um, and that's for all of what we do, but, um, uh, in the past, councils hasn't done a perfect job, but it is definitely in, it's under the microscope right now.
Uh, interesting. Uh, Glenn Dunson asks, what council education resources are needed to make wussed maintenance easier for landowners?
Government.
Can the landscape guidelines be better articulated?
Um, so yeah, like we've developed fact sheets and we've got the letters and we'll probably have some videos and stuff to kind of help with, um, owners understanding things. I'm not too sure about the landscaping guidelines, what that means. But we do have our wussed inspection and maintenance guidelines on our website, which provides a description and uh, the resources needed to understand the asset types and the maintenance, uh, associated with them.
Yeah. And that rollout, that slow rollout and, and the website and the focus on education means that we, um, and the fact that you can contact us, we're very concerned about that. So we will, we will be taking comments as we start rolling out the pro, the, the program from, um, people who have to engage with it, but it's okay. So it's a big focus.
Uh, Caroline Carvallo asks, how hard was it to get these documented in section thirty-two? How did you do it? In Victoria, there is a pushback against adding things to section thirty-two, including flood mitigation tanks, et cetera.
I don't know the answer to that, Caroline. Um, send me an email. I think Caroline is at, um, uh, the name is spaced in the council, but Caroline helped me with my PhD. So hi Caroline. Um, send me an email and I'll, I'll, uh, I'll answer that question properly for you.
Yeah. And look, just a reminder, your email address is, uh, I guess if people send it to wussed@blacktown.nwsales, it'll come through.
Daniel and I read those every day. Well, tell us.
Um, Jude, uh,
Not city council.
Jude, Jude asks, um, in relation to offsets, how do you calculate the offset or levy contributed by developers in lieu of an onsite wussing system? Is there a standard levy that council would charge?
Daniel, do you want to answer that?
I, I'm not involved with that, so I don't know. I'm not sure if you know, Andrew.
Yeah, it's, I know, I don't know specifically, but it is, we have a standard way of calculating things. There is a goods and services, um, price list and there's a process behind that at council. So it's, we don't do it randomly. It's, yeah.
Oh, oh, dude, probably is best to email that wussed at Blacktown and you can pass on the relevant person. Um, Shayla Divakala asks, uh, do you find that some types of wussed assets have more maintenance issues than others? Interesting. Careful, there's lawyers watching.
But from my research that I did at Melbourne, you know, in, in Victoria, it, I can answer it like this. Everybody's got a different opinion. When I went to eight different councils and spoke to fifty-four different people in Victoria, I asked this question and I've got different answers. And I don't know why, other than the fact that maybe, maybe part of it is because people, the, the, the actual guidelines on maintenance and the research behind performance, long-term performance is not great. So maybe people are doing more maintenance than they need to, and particular ones are terrible. Others think that this one's legally good because they have to maintain it, but you actually do. So that's my best answer.
Hmm. Gee, that's, that's diplomatic. I could, I could, I could answer it completely differently, but not my, not my presentation.
My talk.
That's right. Uh, Aaron Smith asks, how frequently is this reporting requirement?
Um, so it depends on the asset. It could be three months, it could be twelve months, six months. It just really depends on what type of asset it is. But, um, at the moment, but well, before the program, the frequency was a bit more variable across the council. So maintenance and schedule template will, uh, make it more consistent across the council to make it more fair for everyone. Cause some schedules might say a month while some say six and that's not as fair as it.
Right. Uh, Caroline says, Andrew, she's at Aluvium Consulting now.
Oh, okay.
Uh, Steve Young, uh, is a comment, uh, I can see a very valuable community educational outcome with this program. So well done, guys.
Thank you.
Uh, Angela Dean asks, considering the difficulty in getting the community active, have Blacktown considered a drainage levy for council to maintain the assets?
Oh, we do have one. We do have the, uh, Stormwater Service Charge. Uh, yes, so we do. It's not fabulous, the Stormwater Levy Charge, and we don't want to get into that though.
Cool. Uh, I'm just gonna, there's a couple of questions about modelling. Uh, will there be any integration with S three Q M?
Yes. Unless, correct me if I'm wrong, Daniel, but that's, that's one that's generally used for smaller development. Yes.
I think so.
Right. And look, if anyone has any final questions, uh, feel free to, I, I've probably skipped over a few that probably have been answered in other questions. Um, but if you have any further ones, please send them through, but we're, we're just bang on under an hour. Um, so one from Harry Brizgar, what score, what sort of scale of development is required to provide OSD? Or is it all development, e.g. even dwelling houses? If so, is there a simplified system for applicants to propose compliance systems at DA stage? Or are engineering designs required in all cases? We've experienced a lot of pushback from mum and dad developers who expect to be able to get a DA without spending a bunch of cash on engineering plans.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. Um, that's actually really a question for Tony Merrillies, but yeah. Yeah, but I'm happy to pass it on to him if someone sends it, if they send it through to me.
Again, yeah, so if people have, there's been a few questions that are sort of complete, a bit sort of outside the scope of this sort of on, uh, Blacktown program. And if you do have those questions, yeah, send it to that, uh, the email address on the screen and, um.
And we'll find the right person.
Yeah, cool. But look, uh, look, I think that's about it. I, I, look, we'll call it quits, we'll pull out stumps. Uh, look, on behalf of everyone here today, Andrew and Daniel, thank you so much for giving up your time. It's been greatly appreciated. Uh, if, again, if people want to copy the slides and, uh, or want to send the, a recording of the, um, webinar to, uh, others, uh, it'll be on the Ocean Tech website under our education and, uh, webinars tab. And all our recordings from all our webinars are on that. Um, and obviously the, the, if you want a, uh, CPD form or whatever, please email Ocean Protect. Uh, but look, this one's been a cracker of a presentation. We had, I think, two hundred and ninety-something people in attendance. Um, so obviously you two have got some star appeal, uh, and, uh, so, but again, in all seriousness, the, the wussed, uh, uh, compliance program of Blacktown City Council is first class. It is the first in Australia and I'm really optimistic that it'll be, uh, adopted by others. So in that regard, both Andrew and Daniel, well done in your work involvement in that regard. Sorry.
And those people that I've listed there and others too, we need to, yeah, them too. Sadly, Daniel and I can't take the entire credit.
Oh, for sure. Yeah. Look, I, I'm, I'm amazed, Andrew, you've had any input into this project.
I realised.
But look, uh, I think, again, thanks for everyone who's dialled in today. If you've got any further questions for Daniel or Andrew, uh, or I might have missed your question somehow, please email wussed@blacktown.nwsales dot gov dot au. Uh, and without further ado, enjoy the rest of your day. Thanks again, Andrew and Daniel. Spectacular presentation and I'll hope to see you guys. I hope to see everyone in person sometime soon.
Awesome. Thanks, guys.
Thanks, guys. Very good.